With that, we're going to move on to a public hearing, public hearing on twenty 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 three, twenty four biennial budget, twenty twenty three property tax levy, twenty twenty three user fees, twenty twenty three surface water utility rate and tax and the twenty two twenty twenty three, twenty four sewer utility rate and tax. And the twenty twenty three transportation benefit district vehicle license fee and sales tax. At this time, our finance director, Lindsay Vaughn, I believe is going to speak and our city administrator, Bill Hill is going to speak if I'm correct.
That is correct. Thank you so much, Mayor, for the introduction. And at this time, I'm hoping I have the ability to share screen. I do. Can everybody see the screen of the budget? Okay, perfect. Presentation. Okay, so I'm going to just walk right on into this. This should look familiar. Maybe. It's. There we go. Okay, so walking down to the the public hearing overview, the overview presentation will be done by myself, the finance director. And actually, the second budget hearing presentation is going to be done by city administrator Hill, which I'm very grateful for. Breaking these up. Then we're going to go to questions and comments for city council. And then the open public hearing from citizens comments and they'll have three minutes to speak. So walking down to the actual material, all of this should look very familiar. From the twenty seventh, the city does adopt the property tax levy on an annual basis. So even though the city does produce and adopt in a biennial budget, the property tax does have to be done on an annual basis. So the value of what they define as the one percent, the increase over last year's levy is the value of thirty three thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars. There are a couple other components that go into the property tax and that's new construction, which is just under eighteen thousand. And then re levy of prior year refunds, which basically in a very simplified term are true ups between property tax and between King County and the city of Lake Forest Park. And then this is done on a very preliminary basis. We have to have it adopted and submitted to King County this within the month of November. So we always add a note down there to estimate high for any changes that occur in the future to make sure that we are capturing a full one percent. So walking down into the next slide and taking a little screenshot of the one percent. We, the median value of the twenty twenty three is six hundred and seventy six thousand four hundred with which is up from six hundred and seventeen thousand from twenty twenty two's median property value. And we've used those rates, if you, the six hundred and seventeen, we've used that rate calculating with the current levy rate for twenty twenty two, which is in blue of the point eight three eight one four. And then if you walk down, you have the proposed levy rate for twenty twenty three and again stating that it's a preliminary number and has not been finalized. But that's point seven oh four three oh. And then you take that and you walk that to the right side of the screen. And we're using the property, the medium value of property with that levy rate. And so I want to note here and also the calculation at the bottom is the assessed value of the property divided by one thousand times the levy rate. And I want to continue to say that assessed values, as assessed values go up, which is being demonstrated here on this slide, the levy rate will actually go down. And then I just want to state that no matter how much the assessed value in the city increases, the city's levy may only increase by one percent. So going down to the next property tax slide, this is a very visual way of understanding that the property taxes that you pay to King County, only eight percent of them actually come to the city of Lake Forest Park. The rest of the other agencies, if you go over to the right side of the screen, is the schools, the schools levies and their bonds, the King County itself, the fire district and the library district. Going down to the next topic, which is the proposed sewer rate increases. In the past, King County has always increased its sewer rate on and every other year. And so we've done kind of a leapfrog where when the county has increased their rate, then on the off year where the county was not increasing their rate, then the city increased the city's portion of the rate. And just, I believe it was last year, they elected to now increase their rate on an annual basis. So first things first, the increase for twenty twenty three is going up three dollars and forty five cents for a monthly amount and three dollars and sixty two cents in twenty twenty four. If you walk down on the left side, King County, King County's portion of the increase, which is a direct pass through, is increasing by five of five point seven five percent for both years in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And the city's portion is increasing three percent. If you'll see in twenty twenty two, it was the year where the city was increasing their portion of the rate, which goes back to a two thousand four study on on the amount to increase the rate. And so that is now being split out on an annual basis. And then if you walk to the right side of the screen, the commercial and multifamily consumption based, again, that that rate is increasing at the same amount. The five point seven five for the county's portion and three percent for the city's portion. The rate when it is increased, it is increasing for the operating funds for the operating portion of the sewer and in addition, the capital portion, capital fund portion of the sewer. So both of those are being captured. And then walking down to the proposed surface water rate increases. On an annual basis, the increase for a single family residential is twenty two dollars and thirty nine cents. It's supporting again the operating and the capital surface water funds. The rate increase that's being proposed for twenty twenty three in the surface water fund is ten percent. And this rate also gets adopted annually, similar to property tax. I'm going to take a minute to pause here and say that in through all of our budget discussions and actually just earlier this year in twenty twenty two, our senior project manager has been in front of you quite often this year talking about all of the changes, the permit requirements that have increased on a significant financial amount for the NPDES, which is the Clean Air Act that's federally mandated. And so we're trying trying to stay in compliance with that, which does come at a cost. In addition, the city's been a leader in the culvert replacements. And the culvert replacement that we just completed was the L sixty project, which cost us about one point three million dollars to complete. With that being stated, we did complete them, but it did deplete our capital surface water fund. And so this increase helps the city start supporting and paying into that capital fund in order to build that fund back up. So we can continue to improve our culverts and keep our streams healthy. Walking down to, this was actually a request from a council member. It was, I think, an excellent request. Was what does this mean to a household, all of these rate increases? So we did a household example with a utility rate increase for the residential customer. And on a monthly basis, it's about a five dollar and thirty two cent increase. And on an annual basis, it's a sixty three dollar and seventy nine cent increase for the combination of both the sewer water increase and the surface water increase. And then you'll see in twenty twenty three, the new rates that are being proposed on a monthly and an annual basis. And then over on the right side of the screen, it's the twenty twenty two monthly and annual. And then walking down to the user fee rate increase. And you'll see in the actual attachment that's in your packet, the building codes. Those fees are now included on this, the user fee, the twenty twenty, the proposed twenty twenty three user fee schedule. And the fees will vary for the individual permits and services. The false alarm fines went increased from fifty to a hundred dollars to fifty two to a hundred and three. Passport photos increased from sixteen to twenty. The sewer water rate increase, it's just again captured on on this resolution as an additional three dollars and forty five cents a month. The surface water rate increase increased an additional twenty two dollars and thirty nine cents on an annual basis. And then the technology fee went from five percent to ten percent. And that was for planning, building telecommunications and photocopies and records. And I believe that concludes my overview of this, the main budget, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget related items. And then following this public hearing will be another public hearing that we've defined more as the new revenue, which city administrator Hill will be covering. And then at this time, I would request Mayor that if there's any questions or comments.
The council. Yes, council, to my right, anybody have any questions or anything? For Lindsay right now, how about to up? Okay. Tom, Lori, any questions at this time? Yes, council member Bodie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the clarity in the presentation. To me, it's a very important that our user fees keep pace with our actual costs so that the user fees actually are recovering the cost of administering these various programs and efforts. And and even so, the increases that we're seeing in total are quite modest, I think, in the scheme of things. So I just want to thank our finance director and the staff for putting this information together so clearly. And I think the the user fee information is again, to explain for the public, it's based on our assessment of what our our costs going forward are for these operations and services. That's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Okay, see another no other questions for Lindsay. At this time, I'll open our public hearing for comments. Just remember you have three minutes to speak and just state your name clearly and we'll open at this time. Do I have anybody here signed up for the, okay, on to Zoom? Do we have anybody signed up on Zoom this evening? Oh, wait, so would you like to, this is now on the, on the open, on the hearing for the ordinances on the budget, not not citizens comment? Okay, great, okay. Alan Keast?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Three themes I wanted to share tonight. The first is a correct statement I made last comment time. I had stated that the the federal aid to the city under the American Recovery Act is one point three million dollars. That figure is in the budget, but a deeper look at the budget indicates that apparently that figure is three million seven hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and fifty five dollars. That represents the aid from the federal government to the city of Lake Forest Park. And it's an interesting thought. I don't think in the sixty one year history of the city, any group of elected officials has ever been a beneficiary of such a windfall. Secondly, the the city council has a responsibility at this time to craft a sustainable budget. As as elected officials know, the city policy is, is that the ending fund balance of the general fund not fall below roughly one point six million dollars. But when you look at the six year forecast graph produced by the finance department, it's apparent that in approximately, if the mayor's budget proposal were to be adopted by the city council, that it would set the city on a course to basically flush out the federal windfall over largely over the next two years, starting in January of twenty twenty three. So that when you get to approximately January of twenty twenty eight, the ending fund balance falls below the required threshold of a one point six million dollars. And something approaching December of twenty twenty eight, it would fall to about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be a million dollars below the city requirement. So the budget cannot be adopted as proposed by the mayor. The council must rework the budget, put it into a sustainable form. Otherwise, it is violating its own policy of the of required minimum fund balance in in the ending fund balance of the general fund. And the third theme is this. I I know that there's been some discussion in other meetings of council members of possibly raising salaries of elected officials. As someone who was on the council in the nineteen nineties and and supported the first, it used to be that all elected officials worked with no compensation since nineteen sixty one. We got to the nineteen nineties, the council did support introducing a salary for council members of four hundred dollars per month. And in the two thousands, it supported a further increase to six hundred dollars per month. Keep in mind, when those increases were adopted, the city financed slope momentum was sustainable. And so I'm sure the council members understand that it would not be appropriate to be increasing elected official salaries at a moment when the city funding slope over the next four to six years is not sustainable. So whatever merit that that concept would otherwise have, it will, it will certainly need to wait until the council produces a sustainable budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next. Welcome, Julian. You ready to talk, Julian?
Now I got the unmute button.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah. Obviously, the budget and all your work is too large a subject for comprehensive analysis. So here are a few semi-random observations. Council efforts industriousness and seriousness. Council demonstrated seriousness of effort both by the frequency and the length of the meetings, but also by the obvious preparations that council members brought to those meetings. Industriousness is leading to completion before Thanksgiving. This is a notable achievement. Second, special efforts to make fees fit the service provided to the applicant is a good effort that you made, lessening the unequal effects of fees on permit applicants and utility customers. That's commendable. Accountability is a topic. When established culture or habits needed change, the council had a serious discussion about assuring change by understanding the plan for the reformed efforts before funding those efforts. In terms of prioritizing safe streets for all users over the narrow and traditional view of pavement condition being the determinant of use of street repair funds, the council discussions uncovered the need for deeper reforms. I believe that generally separating policy from management does not absolve the council of its oversight duties. I was surprised to sense in the council some resistance to ever operating in that way. Dreamland. Ephemeral discussions of balance, sustainability is a fundamental fact about a budget. Although the discussion of the sustainability of having budgets like this one was discussed, the high level of abstraction and the focus on future biennia made the discussion ethereal. The habitual focus on cash flow management through the biennium and the use of frequent budget amendments lets cost savings masquerade as revenue, allowing the dream of fiscal health and budget accountability to flourish. Your process provides staff time to answer questions. Here are a few questions. In this proposed budget, what is the annual wage cost and the annual total cost for the chaplain of the place department? A position first filled a few months ago. Second, what is the total annual cost of extending the arborist position from the seventy five percent of full time as budgeted to one hundred percent? And third, in the summary reviews of city financial activity throughout this biennium, will this adopted budget, in addition to the customary amended budgets, be used as a basis for evaluating city financial activities? I look forward to the second hearing, even though there's no comment period apparently for the second hearing.
Thank you, Julian. Thanks. Okay, we don't see anybody else raising hands at this time. So if that's the case still, we will close public comments at this time. Do we have any comments from the staff at this time? Okay, I think city ministry of Hill, you wanted to take it from here?
Yeah, and Mayor, you should reopen the public hearing because this item on new revenue is a public hearing and it will have comment as well.
Okay, great. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on twenty twenty three, twenty four biennial budget and related items. Note ordinance twelve fifty nine was updated on eleven nine twenty twenty two and exhibit A to resolution eighteen sixty six was updated on eleven eight twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mayor. You should be seeing my screen, correct?
We are. Thank you.
Okay. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about the new revenue options that the council requested be presented and for their deliberation and consideration. So I will go ahead and get started with that. But first, I want to start with the six year forecast. We've talked about this a lot. There has been a lot of discussion around structural deficits, what that means. Yet the six year forecast, at least through twenty one, twenty two, doesn't seem to show that trend. And we've explained this in several meetings prior, but I thought it would be good to come back to it and that the difference between beginning and ending fund balance in the twenty seventeen, eighteen biennial budget was a lot of building permit activity. The Southern Gateway Project brought a lot of unanticipated funds to the city, increasing that ending fund balance in the nineteen twenty timeframe. That was some pandemic building that we all saw in twenty twenty, everybody trying to decide what they're going to do at home, working from home, not going on vacation. There was also a lot of cost containment by the staff during that timeframe. Basically, we zeroed out all the budgets. There was no travel. There was no training. There was basically nothing going on. And then we also had the closeout of the Kenmore contract. You'll remember we used to share Public Works with Kenmore. We were no longer able to support that as a city. And when that ended, there was some balancing that needed to be done, to which the city of Kenmore had to write the city of Lake Forest Park a check. And then in twenty one, twenty two, which is this last biennium, you see the beginning fund balance up just over six point five million. And then at the end of this biennium, following just below five point five million. That again has been some cost containment and a extremely large bump in school zone camera revenue of about one point eight million and twenty one. And we had the cohort model going to schools. So what this tells us as we look at it is that these increases are one time, none of them in any given year has been the same revenue source time and time again, thus giving you a trend, something you can count on to run the city, what it shows and the reason that the drop off is precipitous from twenty three, twenty four on is there is a deficit between ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures. And you can't predict those one time bumps. And so the out ears do not predict those and they show the true nature of that imbalance between revenues and expenditures. So the optional additional revenue increases that are available to the city council to take action on is first, the transportation benefit district vehicle licensing fee. That currently stands at forty dollars per vehicle per year. That can be raised by ten dollars to fifty dollars. That would generate to the city hundred nine thousand dollars per year. The transportation benefit district sales tax of point one percent, that is a council manic action as well, would generate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that would mean two hundred and fifty nine thousand per year or five hundred and eighteen thousand per biennium that would stay within the transportation capital budget, cannot be spent on general fund items. It would be for your your safe streets and sidewalks, et cetera. Revenue that can be generated that would flow into the general fund are your sewer utility tax and your surface water utility tax. Those calculations have been run at six percent, showing you a general fund revenue of a hundred ninety two thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars coming from sewer and seventy nine thousand one ninety four coming from surface water. And you can see the totals for the annual and for the biennial. I just want to pause there to to note that that biennial total of five hundred and forty four thousand is roughly just under half of the the difference between revenues and expenditures ongoing for this biennial budget. It's about one point two million dollars between revenues and expended. Yeah, expenditures. Some of this will look familiar to you because Lindsay's already presented the majority of this, but this drops in and shows you here's the twenty twenty two rates, the twenty three rates, which have already been detailed tonight. And then how the six percent utility tax adds on to that for the monthly residential rates annual increase because of just the utility tax of fifty two dollars as your four thirty seven times your twelve months. Walking over to the commercial and multifamily consumption based. So you'll see it's it's a small number of point six five percent of the utility tax, six percent. But that gives you an overall rate of eleven dollars and forty two cents. And that is per cubic foot is measured differently for the multifamily and commercial. And then for the surface water utility tax, these are the numbers that Director Vaughn walked through with you, the twenty twenty two fee, the ten percent increase to the rate, the new rate. And then the utility tax would be charged on that rate of fourteen dollars and seventy seven cents. And that's to the homeowner for that utility tax. And as you mentioned, that does, that is billed annually like your property taxes. Excuse me. So back to the household example, this top line just shows you what's already been explained tonight of the sewer and surface water increases. Here are those two increases of forty one, forty and twenty two, thirty nine for a total annual increase for those two rate paying funds of sixty three dollars and seventy nine cents to the homeowner. You add the new revenue increases of eighty seven dollars and twenty four cents. This is if you take all of your new revenue possibilities for a total of a hundred and fifty one dollars and three cents, what the average homeowner would pay per year in new utility taxes and fees have been covered previously, roughly just under thirteen dollars a month. So if we step back, the twenty twenty three rate with this is with the rate increases, that is your total amount. You add twenty dollars, we're assuming two vehicles per household, could be more, could be less, but we had to make an assumption. Add twenty dollars there, your utility tax fifty two, forty seven, that's based on the twenty three annual sewer rate. And then the sewer utility tax, stormwater utility tax of six percent based on the twenty three rate of fourteen forty seven, and you'll find the difference between the one two oh eight oh four and the eleven twenty eighty is that one fifty one oh three total. And again, open it for a public hearing. Do you have any questions for staff before you do that, I guess?
Right side. Yes, council member feared high.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, thank you, Administrator Hill for clear presentation. Just a one note I wanted to make is that all of the increases that you were showing on the previous slide, the last slide you were on, those are on different bills, right? So for instance, like the surface water would be on the property tax bill, the sewer would be on the sewer bill and so forth. And so therefore, people aren't going to see this in one spot, right?
Correct.
Vales to the right. Yes, council member Riddle.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that of those four potential revenue increases, one of them is eligible for the senior and disability discount, a fifty percent discount. It's just, I think it was just one. I think it was just one. Is that, is that correct? Just the, uh, the sewer?
That is correct. It is the sewer, um, the sewer rate is eligible for that senior and low income discount.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's my Leo. Uh, Councilmember Bodie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, uh, just comment on the context for the new revenues that we're looking at. We are, um, limited, we are largely a property tax funded, um, city, and we are limited, as our finance director pointed out, to, uh, 1% of the total property tax revenue increase every year. So that means for the average homeowner, their actual property tax levy rate that goes to Lake Forest Park gets reduced if there's inflation, right? Because the, the total cannot be more than 1% additional. Um, and so that amount, um, as our finance director pointed out, is this year 33,000 dollars. That's all. When we have, um, very high inflation, uh, affecting both our salaries, our services, and our supplies. Um, in addition, as, uh, our public comments mentioned, we don't have, um, a sustainable budget in the long run. We have been lucky to have one-time revenue sources that have helped us get through the, uh, our, our financial crunch situation. So in general, I just want to provide that context for these, um, modest revenue increases. I know that they're not zero, but they are actually um, a way to help us move our budget in the long run to greater sustainability. So I just wanted to say from my point of view, um, I, I appreciate the presentation. It's been very helpful, and the staff has been very, very thoughtful in giving the council information that we can rely on and consider as we, um, as we move forward to plug the holes in our long-run budget. So thank you so much.
Uh, Councilmember French.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick point of clarification, and I also wanted to thank my colleague, uh, Customer Buddy for her comments. She beat me to a couple of things I was going to say. Um, our, our, on our agenda, it says staff address questions that may have been presented during public comments and from council. And I was just wondering if there's an opportunity here, um, to, um, address a cou- a, a couple of the questions that Mr. Keast and Mr. Anderson had raised, um, from staff. Mr. Anderson raised, I believe, three questions. Mr. Keast just raised a question about the, um, shouldn't say just, not to, to minimize it, but about the intersection of, um, where the structural deficit comes into play here down in the future. Could we do that, Mr. Mayor? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I think, just don't, you know, quickly.
Administrator Hill, you want me to take the lead on that?
Um, I can address a couple of, if you can get the arborist, I know I can handle, um. So to the question about the chaplain, there is no cost to the city for the chaplain. That is a volunteer position. Um, to the structural deficit, uh, one thing that I do want to clarify is that in the six-year forecast that I showed, and it was general fund beginning and ending fund balances, those do not reflect the ARPA dollars that the city received. They're held in a separate account, um, that are being allocated by the city council for either replacing lost revenue to the city, doing eligible projects within the city, um, dispersing those to local businesses and local nonprofits for work and costs related to, um, the COVID-19 pandemic. So they are not reflected in there so that, that there will be no spending of those funds, um, to balance the budget. Um, we did take a small amount, um, and it's reflected in the budget for lost revenue. Um, Director Vaughn, do you have, uh, answer on the arborist costs?
On the arborist cost, I would say that what was requested was just to increase that FTE count to 0.75. It was not requested. Um, in order to increase it to the one full FTE, um, off the top of my head, uh, this evening, I don't have the dollar value of the 0.6 to the 0.75 FTE, um, what that value is. So if that is what the public was looking for, I, I don't have that quick answer off the top of my head.
Deputy Mayor, were there other questions?
Deputy Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Castle, over, then Deputy Mayor French.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you very much for those answers to those questions and for your good presentation, uh, Ms. Vaughan and Mr. Hill. I just would like to make a comment about the, uh, structural deficit and the issue of the 1% uh, tax increase that we are allowed to take. We are not alone in our, uh, facing this structural deficit problem because of the limitation of the 1% uh, property tax increases that we're allowed to take. Every city in the state is facing the same issue. We are not alone, and all of us as cities request from the state legislature, um, and, uh, and for every avenue that I can take, I do make this request that the funding of city services is reaching a crisis point across the state, and the city and the state legislature must address this issue. It is simply not realistic to imagine that only a 1% increase in property taxes for cities like us that must depend on them can continue when inflation is at the rate it is at now and is always more than 1%. We have not seen inflation less than 1% in my lifetime, I don't believe. So, uh, just, it's, and it, it's, it is not, um, a situation that we can solve alone as a city. It must be solved as a wider community, as at the state level. The county has been as much help as they can be to small cities like us, but that's not enough. So I just want the public to know how hard we as city council members are working to try to resolve this situation at the state level.
Thank you. Councilmember French, I mean Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you very much, Vice Chair Castle, for, um, excellent comments. I, I think too, and, and before I continue, I wanted to thank Administrator Hill and Director Vaughn for answering those questions. I think it's just, uh, I think it's important for us topically for us to get these out at the same time if, if we can't answer them since we've, uh, stated that we would do so. And I, I think it's really important to recognize, as Mr. Hill indicated, that, uh, we have been very careful and conservative about these one-time revenues and not counting on them going forward. And I think that this policymaking body has done a very good job of making sure that the, the federal funds that have been coming into this community, which we have not been largely dependent upon, but we have been very, very conservative about how here we're, uh, spending those funds and making sure that we're holding some back um, for additional support for local, um, social, uh, uh, community services as well as for local businesses and as well as for the unexpected that may be coming down the pike here. We do not know. And so when it comes to looking at this budget, the, um, m- my feeling is that this community is going to have to continue to have a conversation, uh, going forward about making sure that we push that eventual, uh, crossing of the revenues versus expenditure line out farther and farther and farther to, hopefully to a point, which I hope I see in my lifetime, but maybe not happen, that we will not have to worry about it again. At the same time, I think it's really important for us to recognize that that number does not cross for a very long period of time, and there are significant amounts of money, monies that we are being very careful about, and we do not know what's going to happen in terms of, um, you know, again, as Mr. Hill indicated, traffic ca- camera revenues have changed. There's a lot of different things there. My opinion is that we are in a place right now where this is illustrating the point with the community that in a year or two, we're going to have to, uh, we're going to have to continue to ha- have this conversation on an ongoing basis. For the year or two, we're going to have to be looking at what it really means to, to sustain the level of services, uh, that this city has enjoyed for quite, quite a period of time. And that's really the, the bottom line, in my opinion. So thank you both for answering the questions, Lindsay and Phil.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on biennial budget and related items. Do I, I don't think I have anybody signed up, correct, Chief? Okay, I'm having Chief check first. I'm just making sure. Okay, uh, Julian Anderson.
I didn't expect this, uh, but, uh, I, I thank Phil for his full answer to my question. Lindsay, uh, the director, uh, answered a question I didn't ask, and didn't address the third. I'll pursue that by email outside of this meeting. Uh, my one comment about, uh, this topic, and I appreciate the seriousness you give to it, uh, is that I appreciated the attempt to do a worksheet that a family might understand for the impact on their budget of changes that you are proposing. Uh, and I thought it was a good first effort, but it did not include a real estate tax. And so I think a second effort should be made, and not just with an average, mean, uh, household, but maybe at the 25th percentile and at the 75th percentile of property value, uh, to get some idea of the range of effects of the changes you propose. Uh, transparency will be good when you go to explain this to a wider audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Anybody with their hand up besides that? Alan Keast.
There we go. Thank you. I noticed in, uh, one of the budget narratives, a number I had not seen previously, and I'm going to comment on it. Apparently, the median income of the, a household, now household might be one person or six people, but a household in our city, if I remember right, it was 138,000 dollars per year. I hadn't known that before reading that. I guess I would just ask that the council give consideration to the extent that that number is accurate, and it quite possibly is accurate, that there is one half, therefore, of the city whose median income per household is less than 138,000 dollars per year. And it's the responsibility of our elected officials to serve the entire city. Um, so that in doing that, I think it would indicate possibly a, um, thought process of looking at the expenditure side as well as the revenue side. I'm hearing a lot of discussion on revenue enhancements, nothing so far on trimming of expenditure proposals, including non, non-mandated uh, community service proposal, uh, budgets that, uh, are not coming up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Okay. I'm seeing no others. I will, um, stop this, uh, public hearing at this time.